Yeah.
He likes to do that.
He loves that one. Great to see it.
Respectful minds.
So we've been going on so long and really fulfilling.
It's great.
Now they're gonna have their choirs gonna be back for the winter, so that's gonna be good.
Yeah, that church is beautiful.
We were at six thirty, Mr. President.
Get everything.
Speak up a little bit. We ready, Karen?
Somebody tries to talk, but no one's on the meeting, so. But Dana was gonna join virtually, but he's not on, so I'm sure what.
Good evening. I'd like to call together to order, please, the Culver Town Council meeting for September twenty-six, two thousand twenty-four. Roll call, please.
William Clevenger.
Present.
Bill Githens.
There.
Jenny Monroe.
Here.
Tyler Chardy.
Here.
Please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Mr. Mayor online?
He's not.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a guest speaker this evening?
You approve the minutes?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, for approval of the minutes.
Motion to approve.
Ms. Monroe moves to approve the minutes, September fourteenth.
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Chardy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Moments approved. Do we have a guest speaker tonight?
No.
Okay, thank you very much.
Unless you wanna open it up for public concern.
Okay. All right, next on the agenda is public concern, utility ordinance violation appeals. Anyone in the room? Yes, sir?
Craig Misswiz, five twenty-two, South Main, just looking for an update on the clock downtown.
Yeah, I did.
Months ago.
Sure, yeah, it's been months, hasn't it? Bob Porter, the company that originally put it in, is not responding, so Bob is looking at contracts, he's looked at different people, he's got three or four contacts, and I think he put in two calls. Earl Schaefer came up about two weeks ago as well, concerned with it, we pulled everything that we had on it, and we are looking to get it fixed. We're concerned about it as well. I love that clock, so I will bring it, I don't have an answer for you, but what I will do is ask Bob, I'll put that back on the list of things that we need to prioritize if we go into the fall. But we did have it on our radar, to be honest with you, about two weeks ago, and it slipped off the radar, and so I'll follow up on that, I'll get you an answer and send you a text. Is that good?
My, my concern is when I asked last time, I was told parts were ordered.
Yeah, I don't, who, I'm sorry, who said, it wasn't me.
Karen. Yeah, parts were ordered. You guys shut me down real quick, parts were ordered, so.
I'll have to listen to the recording. I can tell you that we've reached out to several different companies, and the company that worked on it previously is not, won't work on it, so we're trying to, we've, we've put a, um.
Feel, I guess.
Oh, no, that, yes, and then another company said they wouldn't work on it as well, so if I, if I said that parts were ordered, I thought I was told parts were ordered, I will double check and make sure that that's what.
I had, I had a call. Calling with Andy Satt over at the academy, because they have something very similar on campus there out by the Bath and Science Building, and so I've got, he hasn't gotten back to me, but honestly, I didn't follow up either, to be honest with you. It's on me, and I'll make sure that I put it on my list. I'll have an answer for you, at least in a week, by next week.
I was at Allen, Indiana, last month, somewhere in Indiana where they just had, like, ours fixed.
Okay, there is a company in Southern Indiana, there's a company in Southern Indiana that I, that Bob was gonna reach out to, but again, I did not follow up with him, and it's something I need to do.
I'll look on my calendar and see if I can remember if they had the same exact issue.
I put it out on the list, and they responded, I, they gave the, the name of one, and they wouldn't work on it.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, it's.
Yes, sir, yeah.
I'll save you guys the trouble. Because I donated to the clock fund and know a little bit more about that clock than I let on. The company that put the clock in is in Alabama, that one. Lot for that.
We pulled up the invoice seventy-nine hundred bucks for the clock. I have the original invoice.
I've placed about, I've placed about ten of those around the country at golf courses, public golf courses, you'll see one coming up at the next Ryder Cup, get that bed black. I've talked to the clock manufacturer, the people that have the service contract for the town, and all that needs to be done is you have to order four sets of hands, four sets of movements, and a controller. And then.
Do you have that phone number for me?
I'll, I'll give you every.
That would help me out a lot, and that way I'm not on a wild goose chase. We try to help each other out, so I would love that.
It didn't take that long when, like, we had friends here from Canada this week, and they were so disappointed that all the clock wasn't working, because in a small town, that's a beacon for a lot of people, and it's, it's been unrepaired for over six.
These parts can be ordered and installed by anyone, or?
Uh, the people that have the service contract that we, we paid for can service the clock, and it's, it's kind of a simple process, actually, so any clock repair, and Earl, believe it or not, Earl could probably fix it himself if he had the parts, because he, he does that, but, uh, yeah, they're local, they're, they're in Indiana, they own, they have a contract with the city. I think last year we've paid them nine hundred fifty-four bucks, which means there's still eleven hundred dollars left.
Appreciate it, and, and I didn't know you were involved in that, because the only person that's spoken with me directly who's come in was Earl. And so about two and a half, maybe three weeks ago, Karen, he came in, I pulled the old invoice out, we called the company, so I was trying to follow up, but this sounds like a fast track to me, to get this thing, so if you would send me that information via email, I greatly appreciate it. I'll follow up, I promise now.
Who's been week paid nine? Are you talking about, who's been?
The town, the town paid nine hundred.
It was the Smith clock.
The Smith clock.
Early in the year. Okay.
Yep, and they have a, they have a maintenance agreement, so.
But they're not wanting to fix it, is that the?
I'm not gonna comment on it, I, I don't have all the backs.
It sounds like I, I need to, and, and that's on me, again, not, not on Karen, that was on me because it was brought to my attention, but if you'd send me that, I greatly appreciate it, and I'll follow up with you, and see if we can't get that, because this is something I'd like to see done too. I share that with you.
That would be awful, if we pay them and they send it out.
If there's anything with the contract and you need me to lean on.
I will, yep, yep, I'll make it a, it's just good to be reminded every once in a while, because the river flows and I, it got away from me, so thank you.
Anyone online for the public concern, utility ordinance violation?
There's no one online.
There's no one online, thank you. Next is public dialogue, the public hearing on the two thousand twenty-five budget. Karen and I would like to open the public hearing at six thirty-eight.
Do you want a motion?
Yes, I need a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Chardy moves, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Monroe, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Um, hopefully everybody, there were receipts like this out of the entrance showing the twenty twenty-five, their proposed twenty-five, twenty twenty-five budget. At this time, we're looking at collecting approximately two hundred sixty-seven thousand, or two million six hundred sixty-seven thousand nine, seven oh nine in the general fund. Our budget is current, for all five departments out of the general fund, currently sit at three million two eighty-four, one oh two. That includes four hundred thousand dollars for the down payment for the fire truck, so that's a little out of the normal range. Um, so we're looking at a deficit of six sixteen, or six hundred thousand sixteen dollars, or, sorry, six hundred sixteen thousand three ninety-three. Um, for, again, four hundred thousand of that is the fire truck, which is the one-time capital asset purchase. Um, the remaining two hundred sixteen thousand dollars, I think, will probably be, um, made up, I don't think it will be a deficit of that, um, that amount. Um, we're looking at an income of three hundred seventy-two thousand eight fifty-nine for the park, with four hundred two thousand two twenty-five expenses. That's a deficit of about twenty-nine thousand three hundred sixty-six dollars, there may be some adjustments in that as well. Again, just a reminder, though, that this is the permission to spend, and these budgets doesn't mean that we're gonna spend all of that money. Um, and the income, I usually budget low on income, because you don't always know what hiccups are gonna come from the income side. Um, M V H, the motor vehicle highway, that's all tax revenue, um, on gas taxes, it's forty-seven thousand five hundred seventy is what we anticipate receiving, and that's what the state has reported to us, and we're looking at spending seventy-seven thousand five seventy. Thirty thousand dollars of that is a capital outlay for a street sweeper that we'll discuss shortly. Um, local roads and streets, again, that's the amount that the state has told us that we will be receiving, and so we're just gonna spend that exact amount, we spend that on paving. The cumulative capital development funds will be receiving a hundred and seven thousand eight twenty-nine in taxes, and, uh, yeah, and then we anticipate spending a hundred thousand of that. Riverboat, um, we anticipate receiving five thousand, although I've never seen a specific report that says this is how much you're gonna receive, so it's a guess. Riverboat, um, we're looking at spending ten thousand five hundred dollars. The grant, I put a placeholder in that, um, I don't know that we're gonna have any grant spending or coming up, um, this year that would come out of that fund. Um, but the police department, sometimes they will do, um, the operation pullover, or the D W I task force, and so that's about the amount of money that we spend out of that fund in, in recent time. Um, the ARPA, that money, we have sixty-eight thousand nine fifty-six sitting in that fund, and hopefully we're gonna spend that by the end of the year, if not, we'll spend the rest of that next year. Um, honestly, ready to be done with that. So, um, the two opioid unrestricted and restricted, that's what I'm anticipating receiving, and so, um, I believe you guys have committed, at least this year, you committed to the, the, I don't think it's Project Hope is the name anymore, but I think it's changed. Um, but you committed that money to them this year, I don't know what you're planning on next year, and that, um, actually, I got a notice the other day, there's additional um, revenue coming in for both of those funds, so we may just have to have some discussions next year. Um, unsafe building, don't anticipate getting any revenue, um, but if there is something that comes up, we have fifty-seven thousand dollars budgeted there. The final one is the Geo Bond Debt Service. Um, we had a work session Monday night on that, it's a general obligation bond. Um, we were made aware of, um, that we could take out a bond for one point two million, um, so that debt service would be a hundred fifty thousand dollars per year for ten years, um, and that money would go toward, um, purchasing meters for the water department and, um, upgrades to the water, um.
Right.
Thank you, yes. So that's basically what we're looking at from a budgetary standpoint this year. I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you for making some comments. Yeah, I'm president of Grof Free Marshall County and Project Hope still.
Is it, okay, thank you, thank you.
You can contact us.
Yes.
Is it Sandy?
Um, Matt Handy.
Matt Handy, thank you. I didn't see who works with.
And we just talked about it at Board meetings.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you very much.
That's where our first and second round of O U A, right? Of years, last two years.
And considering that for those restricted funds are very narrow in what you can use it for.
Yeah, that's really the only program. To go program.
Yeah.
Any other comments? I have a motion to close the public hearing.
It's a move.
It's been moved by Mr. Chardy, the second, please. Second by Ms. Monroe. I have six forty-four. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Both same sign. New business. First reading of ordinance two thousand twenty-four dash oh oh five, two thousand twenty-five budget.
I would like to make a motion to approve the first reading of ordinance two thousand twenty-four oh oh five.
Mr. Chardy moves, may I have a second, please?
Second.
Second by Ms. Monroe. Further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. First reading approved. Next on the agenda is ordinance twenty, first reading of ordinance twenty twenty-four dash oh oh six. Basically, I won't read through the entirety of this, but some ordinance of the town of Culver amending parking regulations within the town of Culver. Um, the council will designate two disabled parking spaces on Main Street. The first of these spaces will be located on the east curb across the street from two twelve North Main Street. The second space will be located for disabled, uh, on the eastern curb in front of two oh two South Main Street.
So that would be the old auto parts store in front of that, to provide access down on Madison and Main, and then the other one would be in front of Easter Days, that was a special request because of the secondary, but it also helps with subway parking.
I have a motion to approve on first read ordinance twenty twenty-four dash oh oh six. Ms. Monroe moves, may I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Chardy. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. First read approved. Next on the agenda is resolution two thousand twenty-four dash oh oh four, res- resolution for a street sweeper.
Um, that's actually a resolution authorizing the execution and delivery of master equipment, this just agreement. Um, this is our, the agreement with Crossroads, Crossroads Bank for funding for the street sweeper that you all approved the purchase of, and you approved me going ahead and obtaining financing for. Um, so this resolution just establishes that you approve of this financing, and then tomorrow we'll close on that, um, with bank.
So may I have a motion to approve for resolution two thousand twenty-four dash oh oh four? That, Ms. Monroe moves?
Yeah, I'll second.
Mr. Chardy seconds, any further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, thank you. Do we have any old business, Karen? No business. Wards and commission, anyone here for the technical review plan commission?
We are, Steve is absent this evening, he's asked me to fill in and read for him, um, I'm gonna pass this out, he had handouts, if you pass those down. Uh, building commissioner report, and I think he's lumped everything into one report. August twenty twenty-four, building permits applied for were fourteen, nine in July. Fees for building permits and improvement location applications, Culver received fifteen thousand five hundred eighty-four dollars, twenty-three cents for August, thirteen thousand two hundred twenty-five July. This increase was largely from Culver Equities LLC's applications. Zoning ordinance update, solar ordinance draft from the solar committee is active and in process, the battery storage submission systems draft ordinance is in process. Simply meaning they're still discussing and working on it. First draft of revisions for the zoning ordinance is expected approximately the end of this year, keeping in mind that is a draft form. Unsafe structures, a N O V was sent out regarding a failing structure. The T R C did not meet in August, the plant commission had a single case in August, a replat. I'd like to thank the plant commission secretary, Don Fox, for his preparation of the minutes, he does a great job, and this is a lot of work for a volunteer. The B Z A heard five cases in August, I'd also like to thank B Z A secretary, John Chris, for their, his preparation of the minutes. Again, another great job, and a lot of work for a volunteer. Our zoning ordinance require me to review our permit and application fees annually. Almost a year ago, I presented you with revised fees based on the actual cost to Culver. It is time again, and I'll be presenting for our ordinances to the plant commission in October, and after the plant commission review, it will come to you, the town, town council. The handouts that you've received are a preview of what I'll be presenting to the plant commission, it is for your consideration, thank you, Steve. That is the building commissioner report.
Thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
For the zoning appeals.
That was me. There you go. Got nothing.
Nothing.
That's her.
Read aloud the commission.
We met this evening and, uh, basically discussed spending plan for this upcoming year that we're required to, um, for the D L G F, and also that we normally do for ourselves, but, uh, we'll be working on that, and the next meeting. Did that date change for the next meeting?
No, we're, we're same time, the November.
Changing.
Yeah. It'll be November fourteenth instead of on Thanksgiving.
Thing I'll follow. No, no. Mainly of discussion.
Okay. Anyone here from the tree commission?
I would like to speak on behalf of me.
Yes, sir.
Um, I've received about three or four phone calls over the bout, the last month, from various citizens across town, and one of the things that they've expressed is that they, they do recognize the need for us to take down trees, but they're also wanting to encourage us and, and communicate with us about replanning. Um, it's timely and it's fashionable, and just got off the phone two days ago with I U, and we're back on the list with Plymouth, we'll be bringing fifty trees in. Prioritizing spots will be a key. Um, along Main Street, on the south side of town, I think there are some opportunities, but there are opportunities across the board, but one of the things that are, that the citizens told me more than anything is that they wanna make sure that we do not lose our tree scape, the shade and every, and I agree with them, and there were some things, argue, not arguments, but points made that I put down to make sure that we, as we move forward with the tree commission, that we're addressing. One of them's about heat and about shade, especially on some of the paths that we've made, um, keeping those canopies alive and well, and also just making sure that we're removing hazardous trees, right? That was the one thing, what, that, one of the questions was, what was our qualification for trees to be removed, and that is based upon, and we'll have an arborist intern here, and they're gonna help us kind of write maybe a better policy for that. We do have a sense of when, when a tree is rotten or sick, but there may be a better way of, of addressing some of these things, so.
Yeah.
Just wanted to communicate that.
For your knowledge, Kevin, the tree commission early on did a tree study, and they brought, they've brought an arborist multiple times, if I'm not mistaken, and so usually they'll identify the dead trees as a priority, and sometimes it's Bob's identified it because of, we've had a citizen complain or, or recognize that it's about to fall, or whatever the case is. Um, and some people.
G I S map is, I think what you're referring to, yeah, I have that G I S map and doing the updates.
I think we have citizens that probably think that we can remove any tree, but the tree commission only removes them in the right of way if they're a nuisance or a problem.
To the sidewalk.
And usually it's because they're, they're a dead tree, more or less, but, um, they, they're great about getting an arborist and.
They, we have a fantastic.
They're nice. A regular one for a while, and when that incident comes, that'll be kind of good. Good, one timing standpoint, but the south end, I, I walk the trail to the cemetery, and there probably is some good spots for trees there.
I think there are two.
Um, and it does get a little hotter on that trail, it's more wide open and.
Especially in that western sky, we, yeah. On the list.
Sounds good, Kevin.
Oh, I'm sorry, Marine, um, yeah.
And, and whose responsibility is it to ground out the stump that's left there?
It's in our right of way, that was, that was one of the problems, right? Um, we need, we, we include that now in the bidding, and we're gonna make sure that those stumps come out. We've got some backlogs, and we've talked about it with the tree commission, and Mike, um, and we're aware of them. We tried to include a couple of them on this list, but those, those are being ground out now. They, they truly are. Some of those old cottonwoods and stuff are, are tough, they get, those root systems go all over the place, they're incredible.
And there's, there's been cases where you've taken one out because it's lifting sidewalks, you also end up with a broken sidewalk or curb, and, um, so then you gotta get that repaired at the same time, and their budget's only fifteen thousand a year, so some years they, some years they just do maintenance or pruning or taking trees out. It's just ridiculously expensive now to remove a tree, it's just bizarre.
That's why it's nice to get fifty free ones.
Yeah.
It truly is.
He's working, maybe they'll take fifty, old ones.
Always thinking, right? That's it.
Next on the agenda, town manager report.
I have several requests tonight, and we're gonna be a little busy here, and I apologize. I have an invoice for the dunes ready and construction materials for you tonight, Mr. President, totaling sixty-one thousand one hundred seventy-five thirty-eight. I'm asking council this evening to approve through the president's signature. Start up there.
This is the one that goes through the grant process, right?
That is, yes, it is.
Reimbursement, because it's in a trust and.
That's correct.
Through Shannon, et cetera, okay.
That is correct.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Ms. Monroe moves, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Chardy. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, both same sign.
Aye.
Mr. Githens is in a. What part?
It's Mr., never mind. Wish I needed one. All right, that's the first order of business there. Uh, second, I have a letter of engagement from Baker Tilly to serve as our financial advisors as the town considers the issuance of their general obligation bond that was spoken about tonight in the budget. I'm asking council to approve through the president's signature once again tonight.
Question for the person that they presented.
It's been moved by Ms. Monroe, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Chardy, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, both same sign. Thank you.
Thank you, counsel.
The order of assignment, that's.
Uh, it should be a tab on it, sir.
Yeah, there is a tab, but I can't.
Oh, right there on the bottom, I'm sorry.
All right. Go ahead, Kevin.
Yes, sir. Keep it going, huh? I also have a letter of engagement for the same bond ordinance, uh, for, I'm sorry, for, what's this one? It is Barnes and Thornburg, um, for the Geo Bond, thank you very much, I grabbed the wrong one. Uh, series twenty twenty-four bond, there'll be our bond council for this bond, and I'd like to ask for the signature of the president.
It's been moved by Ms. Monroe, second by Mr. Chardy, any discussion? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, thank you.
Take a break there before we get angry. All right, let's see. Uh, next one I have is a letter of commitment, again, uh, of engagement. It is with Baker Tilly, this one will be just as our general financial agents of, for the town. Um, it, it's a continuation of the one that we've had, they've just requested the signature, and I'm asking council for their approval through the president's signature. Thank you, sir.
Motion to approve the Baker Tilly Financial Services.
Ms. Monroe moves, a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Chardy. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign.
Yeah, we've gotten through the bond, let's get to what we're using it for. Uh, this is a contract with Midwestern Engineering for the design and engineering of the water plant. Uh, the amounts to exceed for sixty-four thousand seven hundred will be for retaining their scheduling services and the design. Compensation not to exceed twenty-five thousand dollars, and then there's a not to exceed for ten thousand dollars for the bidding. Uh, the twenty-five thousand dollars is also included within the engineering. One of the optional paces of this is seventy thousand within this contract to retain for inspection. Speaking with Bob, we do not need that inspection, he will inspect it, it's just something Midwestern includes. The total comes to about ninety-nine thousand to retain them for the engineering service, and this will be with the general obligation bond. I ask for the council's approval, signature on the right, if vote is yes, please.
Yeah, do we need to approve it with the amendment of non-inquiry inspection, or?
No, because the, the way that it's phrased, Jenny, is that it's included, it can be negotiated after the signing, it's just something they put in, I asked that question today.
Yeah, they've had it.
They have.
In numerous projects with us, some of them were required. In numerous projects with us, some of them require it if it's like an end dot project or.
Correct.
This is not required.
It isn't. And the wording in there is optional.
Okay, I'll make the motion to approve.
Ms. Monroe moves.
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign.
Last but not least, finally one without signature. This is with Peerless Midwest for our two pumps that we're putting in, the B pump and the C pump. These are being upgraded from three hundred fifty gallon pumps to four hundred gallon pumps. When we tested them, we tested them out at five hundred, but the well capacity is six hundred. Bob is asking for that approval to test the flow meter at six hundred to get that pressure. They are at four thousand eight hundred and forty dollars each to make sure that they're up to that level of production.
And that, I think some of these upgrades that we do at the plant will allow us to actually use that capacity.
Absolutely. So one of the key things that we approved tonight with the engineering with Midwestern, just to explain what the bonds really are going for. Number one, we're going to improve the meters throughout the whole town and re-phase everything in so we can capture that meter more accurately on the readings. Not that they're not accurate now, but with the new software, it makes billing much easier. And the meters are something that has been recommended by the state to replace. The second thing we really want to use the bond or the general bond for is in essence, we are redoing the pumps. We're putting high surface pumps in. We have a filter capacity of five thousand eight hundred, or sorry, yeah, five hundred and eighty, there we go, gallons, and we're only putting in at three hundred and fifty. So we're going to get an aerator and pumps that match our filter capacity. That way we have a better reserve. Bob ensures me that it would take longer for a leak maybe to, to, to tap our capacity. It's not something that wouldn't happen, but it, it, it gives us better protection against leak and shutting down the system. The second thing, we're going to replace the filter material within the water filter. So we're going to be able to capture more. Some of that brown that you're seeing sometimes is the iodine. That's why we're flushing it, some of the rust and things. And Bob says the new filter material should improve that greatly. So that's, that was nice to hear the last couple of weeks when we were talking about it.
Karen, have they, I, I remember when they did the software presentation where we can see like a leak happening live. Will this get rolled out on like a machine with Bob and one with Julie or will it be on multiple machines or? Do we know yet?
I'm not sure. I do know that the meter, the, the software that comes with the meters is supposed to do kind of what that presentation was. So, you know, a click of the button.
Yeah, so she comes in in the morning, she could see there's a leak going on at so and so's house. Yes. We don't have to wait thirty eight until their bill was ridiculous.
The quote that I received from our, the quote that Bob asked for and the numbers that we used with the Geo Bond actually includes that leak detection. And if I, if I'm correct, Bob said, I think it also can contact the homeowner. So if, if you're away, you can.
Someone could opt in, get notified.
I do believe so.
That's cool.
Going to look into it more as we learn that that's, that was something that was interesting.
That would be good if it, you know, if it happened on Friday.
Truly, yeah.
They could, if, if the company calls it or the software calls it, calls you, notifies you.
Can we use the boxes outside or use the actual meters in the home? They're the meters in the home. But back to the point, I have it in front of you.
I'm just wondering how it rolls out and like.
Absolutely.
That may not be something you start using till first of the year or later.
Sure. And, and the water plant will be, just last point, the water plant and these pumps, we're probably going to do B immediately. We'll get well C up and running because that's going to require more piping and infrastructure. We'll also put a housing over the well C, a smaller housing, nothing large. And those are kind of the order. And then we'll hit the aerator and the high service pumps on the inside, and some of the inside work over December. So we're kind of looking at this over time. It is. And then the meters will be coming online. We can't shut down everything and do all the meters at once. So we'll be doing them by batches over the course of time. Okay.
Now, I'm excited about the software because there's probably a third of our homes are not people here all the time. They don't know they've got a leak until they get a big bill from us. And I mean, how many times we've had people in this room with that situation?
True.
And we can't always help out because it flowed into our system. We still had to treat it or.
You have to gain entry into the house to implement this.
We would have to gain entry and change the meters. That is correct.
So that's got to be phased in.
Sure. That's exactly right. Right. And so there'll be scheduling involved and coordination.
It'll be a task to, you know, sending it out of town.
You, you're going to see us pretty busy in the summer, so. But I will ask for the well B and C, just for the pump testing, if I could, for four thousand eight hundred and forty dollars.
Motion to approve.
Moved by Ms. Monroe.
Second.
Second by Mr. Rishardi.
I'm sorry, just one thing. If I didn't say it, I'm sorry. That's four thousand eight hundred and forty each well. Thank you, Karen. Appreciate that.
It was A and a B, right?
Yes, it was.
Yeah.
Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Approved. Opposed? Approved.
Very good. I have a few updates tonight. I reached out to park supervisor candidates after our last work session. And I've received two responses for the October fourteenth week. They will be getting back to me on some possible times and dates. But they were yes and very excited. I'm still waiting to hear back from two. Terry has been aware, we've had some tornado sirens and some minor issues with those. He is looking into all the electrical systems. There were a couple of problems with some of the rechargeable battery chargers that luckily we have somebody in-house, Damon, who's very qualified with our utilities, has been helping him with that. And actually found a replacement for it when they said there wasn't. So he's been working on that and continues to. And Terry wanted to make sure that everybody knows that there is a cell phone system now. Marshall County has the cell phone system that will notify you. Obviously, if your phone's off, that's a problem. But, or out. But that is something. And he probably says two weeks, but he's looking into it. Most of our operational, but there's one with, he said something with the siren, and I'm sorry, I don't understand it. Terry understands it. But there's something with the actual mechanical part of the siren. And then one of the battery chargers which have been addressed. So he's going to get me notified and, and I'll do the same with you guys and just let you know where we're at. Last but not least, I received the resignation this evening. I informed the council of Officer Tracy Owens from the police force, effectively nine twenty five. Wayne wanted me to communicate if the council has questions. He's available directly to discuss that with you. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Do we need to approve authorization to advertise for that position?
When Wayne requests it, I think he will. He'll be coming in. I think so. Thanks, Jackie.
Anything else?
That's it, sir.
All right. Karen, your report?
I just have two claims over twenty five hundred for your approval. You've already done one, sixty two thousand forty four dollars for construction management design for the ready project, and that is reimbursed through the, the ready product, the ready grant. And then Monty's best one, tire and auto, seven thousand one hundred sixteen dollars and eighty four cents. And that was for tires for the fire departments.
Motion to approve the claims.
Ms. Monroe moves to approve claims over twenty five hundred. Any second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Rishardi. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Thank you.
Just a reminder that I guess, I just need a motion. I sent an email out just to ask if it was if you guys were okay with, if everyone was free on Tuesday, November twenty sixth. So we can move the meeting off of Thanksgiving because I'm not going to be here and not you, but probably everyone's going to be triptican coma or the, the tripticon. Don't want to make you come back in. So if I could just have a motion to change the November twenty eighth meeting to Tuesday, November twenty sixth.
Good move by Ms. Monroe.
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Rishardi. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign.
And the redevelopment commission is moving their meeting from the twenty eighth to the fourteenth. And then at the October redevelopment commission meeting, they are going to have their meeting for the overlapping taxi units, and I'll be sending out letters in the next couple of days. The last thing I have is just a reminder that this weekend is the townwide garage sales. And maps are available here at town hall, gas stations. They're online. They've been updated a couple of times, some changes. They're on Facebook. So that's there. October seventh is pickup day for townwide cleanup. And then the AIM idea summit, a couple of us will be attending that is October eighth through tenth in Fort Wayne. And that's all I have.
Thank you. John, report.
I don't have anything to report this evening.
Council issues. Ms. Monroe.
I don't have any issues. I just want to let Karen know I do have Adobe in design. Adobe in design.
Actually, I'll pass that. Okay.
Like, you had a ding up.
I know.
I don't have anything. See if.
Chair has nothing. Mr. Githens.
I have nothing.
Motion to adjourn.
So move.
It's been moved by Mr. Githens. Second? Second by Ms. Monroe. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Thank you.
Sean.